Welcome, everybody, to the School Committee Meeting of Wednesday, April 29, 2020. Once again, for the seventh week in a row, we are coming to you remotely. So it is a little after seven. We were just having some technical difficulties, but getting started now. First order of business on our agenda is approval of minutes. So everybody should have in their pocket the minutes from April 22nd, the business meeting. Is there a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you, Maya. All in favor of those minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that unanimous? Yes, 5-0. And then we also have executive session minutes from April 22nd as well. Those minutes are split in two parts. So the first part was all five of us, and then the second part of the meeting was just the four of us. Mara Smith was not at the second part. So is there an approval for the first part of April 22nd, executive session minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
There's a good second.
Thank you, Mara. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Great. And then the second part of the April 22nd, executive session minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Maya. Is there a second? Dave, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye for abstention?
Mara? I'm saying.
Okay, thank you. 4-0-1. So next on our agenda is correspondence. Dr. Thompson, do we have any correspondence this evening?
We do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Dave, Tanya, I believe you had shared with me earlier that you do not have a report on warrants this evening.
Right, there were no warrants last week.
Okay. So next on our agenda is public forum. Just checking the email account again. I do not see any emails in there, but just as a reminder to everybody, if they do have anything they would like to share with the Committee for Public Forum, they can do so at any time by emailing us at MPSchoolcommittee@norwood.k12.ma.us. But at this time, seeing no comments, I will declare public forum closed. Dr. Thompson, do you have any announcements?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I have a case announcement, actually. We are sharing our congratulations with a high school teacher, Molly Upincamp. Molly was just awarded the Outstanding Educator in Teaching Physics Award. It's a statewide award, so I want to say congratulations to her and well-deserved. She walks, talks, and chews gums, dumb, doing civics. She is amazing. I had the joy of going on a forced march through Washington on the civics trip a couple of years ago. She's an amazing individual and an amazing educator, and this is a well-deserved honor.
Great. Thank you so much, and congratulations to her. Any other announcements or the rest will be part of your report?
No, no other announcements. I do have a little bit for my report, though.
Okay, great. So at this time, we do have an appearance this evening. So Kristin Capuzio, who is the Director of Extended Day, is with us tonight, and she has a presentation that she will be giving us. I just want to remind the Committee and inform the community that this was a presentation that we originally had on our Long-Term Agenda back in January, and then due to other pressing issues, it got moved to February, and then it got moved to March. And then it came happen, so I'm very happy you were able to join us tonight, and thank you for your patience, because we had to rework it a couple of times. Dr. Thompson, is there anything that you wanted to share about Extended Day at this point, or should we let Ms. Capuzio start with her presentation?
Well, just really quickly, Ms. Capuzio started with us in August as our new Director of Extended Day, and basically kind of gave her two sets of marching orders to look to expand the program, to serve more families in Norwood, and to improve the program and the offerings that we have. And I think I've shared with each of the Committee at one point or another on how, you know, it kind of broke my heart having conversations with parents when I first arrived on how their children had to choose between the enrichment programs after school and them being able to work. Kristin has made huge strides in that this year, and we're very proud of the progress thus far, and looking forward to more and more. So, no pressure, but you're up.
Okay, thank you. Can you guys hear me well?
We can.
Okay, wonderful. So the presentation that I put together really addresses Norwood Extended Days financials, and the impetus for the presentation is to address, you know, in what ways are our capacities for expansion limited by our present financial circumstances? And this is exempt from COVID. So this is in addressing, you know, the program's financial stability over the last few years, but also the years to come. And so I hope this presentation helps sort of illuminate where we'd like to take Extended Day and what our motivations are for looking at our rates and our fees associated with the program. Just as a caveat here, Extended Day has not changed their rates, their tuition, in over 13 years. So where we are today is much different than where the program was 13 years ago, and the presentation will show a reflection of an analysis of five different towns surrounding Norwood and sort of where we are positionally in the after-school program in terms of what we charge parents. So I just want to provide some context for the presentation before we launch into it, and also give the public some information about that as well. So let me know if you can see my screen. I'm going to go ahead and present it now. And should be coming up. Do you have access to it?
Yes, it's working.
Okay, great. So you'll see the first slide here. This is a reflection of our existing tuition. So for two days a week for an entire month, we charge $96. Three days is $144, four days $192, five days $240. We also offer a 10% discount for siblings, and so two days for two kids would be, per month, would be $172, $259, $345, $432. And again, this tuition has last been adjusted in 2006. A before-school rate, similarly, two days per month, and this is an average. Parents before-school needs vary greatly from month to month, so this is an average, but on, so I'll present it in that way. Two days per week, per month, is around $40 for before-school. Three days per week, per month, is $60. Four days per week, per month, is $80. Five days per week, per month, is $100. The average before-school cost is about $4.50 per hour per child, and the average after-school cost per child is $4 per hour. And when we go ahead and look at the town-to-town comparisons, we'll see that that's significantly lower than all of the surrounding towns that we evaluated. So the after-school comparisons here, you're looking at Stoughton, Brockton, Walpole, Sharon, and Randolph. Now, I realize there's a range here in terms of socioeconomic status for each of these communities, and Norwood sort of falls somewhere in the middle between the five that were selected. We can see for Stoughton, the before, excuse me, the after-school program, two days a week, $225, five days a week, $290. Virtually every single one of the towns has comparably higher scale than Norwood Extended Day. And again, this is likely in light of the fact that we have not adjusted rates in 13-plus years. In looking at the before-school program as well, we can see, again, similarly, each of the towns has a higher per day, per child, rate, per hour, excuse me. And, you know, and there, it needs to be said that there's some nuances here. Some of the before-school programs may start a lot earlier. For instance, I think in the instance of Walpole, and certainly in the instance of Randolph, we're looking at a 6:45 or 7:00 AM start, which is more time in the morning for parents. And it's also whether they include snacks. So if there's some kinds of provisions provided, then of course, the rate is going to be a little bit higher. Nonetheless, you know, our rate is still considerably lower. Sharon is the one that offers a comparable there with $44 for two days, and it looks like it's only for 45 minutes. If we move forward here, I've sort of broken down how many students per school are, and per grade, are attending Extended Day at this time. So Balch has 312 students currently, and just about 30 attend Extended Day. So we're looking at about 10%, and you can see here, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth, how many within each of the grades are actually attending Extended Day? And this is Extended Day at the Savage Center, since these students need to be bused from the Balch to attend Extended Day. Callahan, similarly, 228 students. We have a really high percentage here, 55 students from the Callahan attending Extended Day, and of course, we see these numbers here, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth. Cleveland Elementary, again, we have 69 students attending Cleveland. One of the reasons why this number is so high, one, the number of students in the school is higher, but two, it's also because we're offering onsite services. So Extended Day is offered in the after-school setting at Cleveland Elementary. Unfortunately, we do have caps on that. Only first through third are invited to stay at the school during after-school, and only 40 students. So I do think in the future, this will have to be looked at in terms of providing equitable experiences across all sites as we consider expansion across the district. Oldham, we have about 40 students out of 225, and again, you can see first, second, third, fourth, and fifth roughly where it breaks down across the grades. Prescott as well. Prescott is the site that we're opening in the fall. Yay, our new site that we're opening, another satellite site in our quest to serve the entire district. Presently, before I address the slide, we have just about 45 students enrolled at the Prescott site for the new school year, so that's very exciting, and that alleviates some of the restrictions that we had on offering spaces to students at the Savage Center. And so now we can offer those 45 spaces to students who can now attend the Savage because the Prescott has been opened. So we have first, second, third, fourth, and fifth. You can see the percentages across the bottom there, and you can see presently, we had the lowest number of enrollment for Prescott Elementary. However, we can see that's a sizable increase since we've opened a site at the actual location. So I think that bodes well for the promise of opening more sites across the district. And then the Willet Center here, we've got 273 students, and just about 60 are attending Extended Day. We've got two kindergarten classrooms, and our kindergarten classrooms are anywhere between 26 and 28 students per day, so we have a much more, we have much more flexibility in terms of being able to offer more space for the kindergarten group. On this slide here, we're looking at the students who are in need of financial aid or who are receiving voucher, a voucher subsidy. So Balch, we have a total of four students, one receiving financial aid, and three who are receiving voucher. For Callahan, we have seven students who are receiving voucher support. Cleveland, we have five receiving voucher and one financial aid. Financial aid is for us providing some financial support, reducing the amount of money that's due each month. Voucher is our partnership with an early childhood agency that provides a subsidy to parents, so just to create a differentiation there. Oldham, we see, we have three students who are receiving financial aid and four on voucher. Prescott is two with zero on voucher, that's the lowest, and two total. Willet, of course, we have only two on voucher as well, and two total. So we can see in terms of the district breakdown, which schools, you know, which of our schools host students who have families who need the most support in being able to join Extended Day. Finally, here, on the close second-to-last slide, is a proposal for the future. So again, our current student rate is $4 per hour, $4 per child per hour. The proposal is to increase to $6 per child per hour. Our current tuition, as you see in the left-hand column there, is as it was on the first slide. The second column is what that proposed tuition would look like if enacted. So $6 per child per hour for two days would look like $144, for three days would look like $216, and again, incorporating the sibling discount, which we do intend to. This is what that breakdown would look like comparable to the first slide that I showed you, where $432 would be two students for five days. I think now it's, I'm sorry, I've got a little bar here on the bottom that's hiding it, so I can't see. It's okay, I can go back to it. The last slide here.
Kristin, you can click the hide part, and it'll go away.
Oh, yes. Oh, my goodness. You're a genius. Okay, so 648. You know, and these, this proposal is, again, in a draft phase. We're certainly open to negotiation. We want to look at what we can do to provide the most opportunities for families, but also to sustain the program and its growth. So I think there are more factors to include here as we receive feedback from the Committee. And I also know that there are, you know, programs, different programs offer different incentives. Some programs offer incentives for families who enroll for the full five days because it's a larger commitment. That could be something that we look at as well, in addition to the 10% for sibling discount. The reason why we want to look at increasing the rates for Extended Day, these are just to name a few. This is by no means an exhaustive list, but the first is to provide an expansion in the staff roles and responsibilities. As we do expand across the site, across all sites, which is the highest hope, is that we are going to need administrators at these sites ensuring that operations are following in line with, you know, with our protocols and with our procedures. So we are looking at an expansion in our roles. Certainly, with accounting and bookkeeping, we might need an additional person to help in the office to make sure that all of our financial operations are running smoothly. We also want to upgrade our materials, our resources, and our infrastructure. You know, right now, there is little flexibility if something breaks, or if we need a new table, or if we need more chairs for the kids because we're welcoming more students into the classroom. This is an area where we would need a little bit of a buffer. We certainly need to offset operational expenses with no rate change since 2006, and, you know, the fact that the cost of living does continue to increase, we're still having difficulty keeping up with that. We need capital for our program expansion, our startup costs. We need, you know, we need sports equipment, we need art supplies, we need papers, pens, we need cabinets, we need all kinds of things that are essentially required to actually start up a program and have access to the same materials and supplies and resources that we would across the board. So it's for that as well. Chromebooks, we're looking at being able to off, offer homework completion. This is from a survey that I implemented about two and a half months ago. Parents unilaterally want after-school to be a place where their students can attend to and ideally finish their homework assignments, and we should be, we should be there for that purpose. A lot of homework is being assigned, as we know now, online, and so a lot of our students are not able to complete their online assignments because we don't have access to Chromebooks. And so we'd need to purchase these Chromebooks through the IT department in order to enable our students to better complete their homework assignments when they're at the program. Certainly, we want to offer expansion to our program offerings and enrichment and sort of mitigate the cost to parents. Here's an example of how that transpired this year. So we did offer chess club multiple times this year, which the children love. They really had a blast, and it's a great program for teaching a lot of skills, certainly executive function, planning, strategy. You know, the cost of the chess program made it prohibitive for some of our families who really wanted to join. You know, there's a way in which if we can, you know, provide a little bit of a buffer to our parents, maybe paying 25% of the total cost or 50% of the total cost, then we can offer, we can provide these offerings for more students. And finally, the occupation of another room at the Savage Center, you know, prior to actually rolling out across the district, which again, will take some time, we do need to accommodate the total number of students that, or families that are interested in rolling their students in Extended Day now. And right now, fourth and fifth grade in particular have a sizable waitlist. I think it's maybe 12 or 14 total. You know, with the utilization of a second room, even a smaller room within the Savage Center, we would be able to eliminate that waitlist entirely. So the occupation of a second room, of course, would require, in addition to our rent. So those are some of the main reasons why we really are want to look at how our, you know, how a rate increase would impact our program long-term, and I certainly want to open it up for questions, and if you need me to go back to any slides, please do let me know.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Before we get into a discussion, I do just want to be fully transparent and disclose that, you know, as a parent, I do utilize Extended Day for the last, well, quite a while. My daughter's in seventh grade. We started when she was in first grade, so I think that was in 2013. My son is currently in Extended Day and is also registered for next year. So I did just want to disclose that as we go into this discussion further. But I believe Joan had a request to speak.
Yes, essentially, I need to also disclose that I have two children in the Extended Day program, and they are enrolled for the upcoming year as well. I just wanted to disclose that before we begin the conversation.
Yeah, thank you, Joan. So at this point, any questions or feedback around the presentation that we just saw from the Committee?
Hello.
Chris, can I just ask logistically, can you stop presenting?
Yeah, of course.
Because I see myself and Teresa, and it's twice. Yeah, there we go, much better. Thank you.
You don't want to see me twice, Joan?
It's just a little distracting to see us all moving across, like, it was like waving. Sorry, Dave, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No.
No problem. Hey, Chris, how are you?
Good, thank you. Thanks for inviting me to present.
Yeah, good to see you again. So I understand that we need to go up in price, but do you think that going up pretty much 50% is going to impact people using the program? I mean, we want to ultimately use more people.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's an excellent question. Part of the reason why we looked at, well, let me split this answer into two parts. Part of the reason why we looked at six rather than moving up to five is because we didn't expect to bring this back to the Board to then evaluate again and go through this process again to make yet another increase in the subsequent year. And additionally, six is still relatively low comparable to the five communities that were identified in the presentation. And so, you know, most are starting at seven. In fact, $7 per hour per child was the lowest, and so our increase still takes us into the lowest position, but it's still an increase that's necessary for our program to survive.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the Committee?
Yeah, Chris, could you tell us, have you, it sounds like you've already had registration for this year, and so what have families been told about tuition?
So before we launched the registration, we put the, we put a notification both on the online registration and on the website that our tuition rates were subject to change in the coming year. And, you know, and we did indicate that it would be a moderate increase. And so, you know, for me, the moderate increase is to $6 per child per hour. And so that indication was there, both in the language on the registration forms and also on our website for parents who access the registration form through our website. And it's also gone out, gone out subsequent times in email. I think, you know, certainly, it's something that, you know, once we have agreed, and once, and once the Committee has agreed, once everyone has provided their feedback, that would be put together in a more formal format and then provided to parents. No, no parent has been expected to pay any tuition for the fall at this time, so we have not received any checks for the fall, and we indicated that we would be talking about rates for the fall during this time. Of course, COVID put a little bit of a delay on that, and so, you know, we did indicate in that messaging that we would be getting back to them between April and May. So actually, we're not too far off.
And just a follow-up question, if I could. Do you know what percent of your budget is salaries? I mean, it's, I know that the minimum wage in the state has certainly gone up in the last 13 years, and I'm guessing that that has had a significant impact on your payroll.
Yeah, it has. You know, I don't want to give you an exact, the reality is that we run multiple programs, and so we have our before-school program, and there's a sizable, there's a sizable labor budget for the before-school program, then we have our after-school program where the majority of our teachers work, and then we also have our summer program. And the summer program, we have a, I mean, the labor budget for the summer program is almost the entirety of what we make in terms of income for that program. It's almost a wash. So, you know, I'd say our summer labor budget is very high, but again, that's, that's staff who are working, you know, between 40 and 50 hours a week because that's how many hours our program is open. And then we have our labor budget for the school year, which is outside of April and May, April and February vacation care camps. Those days were also open for a 40-hour week, so again, that's going to adjust how many hours we're allocating for staff who are able to work the full duration of the camp. So it's difficult to say a one, you know, a one-and-done number because we have so many different programs, and that, that percentage fluctuates.
Okay, thank you. Joan, did you have another question?
I do. I actually have three, so I'll start with the first one. The first one is, you know, you were just mentioning the vacation programs and the summer program, but the rate presentations that you did did not include those programs, and those programs are priced separately. So is this rate increase proposal inclusive? Does that mean that your vacation rates would go up by a similar amount, and your summer rates would go up by a similar amount, 50%?
Yes, and so, so I appreciate that you asked that. So yes, we charge differently for the vacation cares and the summer camps, but actually, the rate is the same. And so the hourly rate per child is factored in to the daily rate that we charge for the vacation camps and for the summer camp. For, you know, for this increase, we would, the equation would essentially be the same, that we would factor the number of hours at the, at the rate of hour per child, and then we would have the total per day amount. The only time that there's a fluctuation in, for instance, in the vacation camp, is when we're offering a field trip, and we factor that field trip cost into the cost of the day because there would be no onsite programming, and everyone who attended would need to attend the field trip as well.
Which is additional, correct?
Yep.
So that would mean, correct me if I'm wrong, do you know off the top of your head what the vacation day rate is?
Uh, yes, I think it's 44.
For the day?
Yeah.
So then that would be adding another $20 a day for every vacation day?
Yeah.
Plus, plus the cost of a field trip.
Yes.
So that was my first question, was whether it was all-inclusive. My second question is 50%. I recognize, and I very much hear what you're saying around comparing us to the surrounding towns, but 50% is a large increase. I'm wondering if there's been a plan, or if you considered a plan to do a gradual percentage over a couple of years to get you to the 50% instead of a one, and what that might look like.
Well, I do appreciate that you brought that up, and actually, that was part of the initial collaboration that had taken place between Karen and Dr. Thompson and myself, and also Chairwoman Stewart. We, you know, originally, it was my conception that we would increase over time, and in fact, you know, it isn't, one of the, one of the stalling points, I think, in regards to this program's being evaluated and the rates being evaluated, is that it's taken 13 years to get to this point, and that there really should be some kind of algorithm or some kind of formula in place for addressing when we do need to reassess for increase. So expansion being one of those things, increased enrollment being one of those things, major cost of living impacts being one of those things. And so I'm certainly, I mean, again, this is a draft, and this is our, this is our first iteration, so we want to look at it as a negotiation point, you know, where we're looking at what is going to be best for the district and what's going to be possible for the program to continue to expand. So six is a proposal. However, you know, we certainly are open to and want to be open to different iterations and how that might look in terms of impact to parents, whether it's, you know, next year, we provide $5 per child per hour, and then in two years or three years, we then, you know, again, evaluate whether we want to bump it up to six because there's been significant fluctuations or changes as we roll out across the district. So, so there is no, I don't want to say there's anything concrete.
Okay, and then my final question was, I saw a lot of in your, kind of what we need the money for. What I didn't see was like a staffing goal of child-per-teacher goal. Do we currently have a teacher, like a child-to-teacher ratio? And what the goal is?
Yeah.
And it, does that goal change with this increase?
Um, so the, so this is a really good question because right now, our program receives, receives subsidy from EEC. So the EEC provides us with subsidies for families who need financial support, and they have their own expectations, they have their own mass regs in terms of ratios per classroom, and, and for me, and all the programs I've ever worked in in the past, they've all been Massachusetts licensed programs, whereas this one is not because it falls under the public schools. So in that, in my experience, I've always tried to maintain a third, you know, a, basically an 11 to 13 to one ratio for the kindergarten classrooms, and then a 13 to 16 to one ratio for our, our, you know, basically our first through fifth. What I will say is, even in, even on a 1 to 13 ratio, you know, in terms of safety in the classroom, it does always make sense to have a support or aid in the classroom in case there's an emergency situation, in case a teacher needs support, and most of our classrooms- And most of our classroom sizes are well over 16. In fact, I would say, yeah, the minimum classroom size that we have right now is 26. And so every classroom requires two teachers.
Okay, thank you.
I think Ms. Sheridan wanted to speak a little bit more to the question that you had asked.
I can give you a quick answer on the percentage for the payroll. When I look at the reports right now, this is with the payroll to date and the revenue to date. The payroll is about 42%, but that is payroll to date. It does include all the payroll during the shutdown of the COVID-19. But it, I can't give an exact percentage because we probably would have gotten more, we would be getting more revenue in and there would be more payroll. But to date, it's 42% the payroll of the revenue that she's gotten to date for this year, this fiscal year.
Right.
Karen, does that include the February vacation camp?
That's all of her summer and regular revenue that's in her MUNIS account right now. And all of her summer and regular year payroll to date, like I said, including the shutdown payroll.
Yeah, and I'd like to add, if I could, that I, you know, this would be my first full season and this would be my first full summer. Although now it's a different version of summer. But, you know, I did not, I have not undergone the summer camp. And of course, I would have, you know, in that process, I would have analyzed how many staff do we actually had, how many do we need? You know, I cannot speak to how things were done in the past, you know, and I cannot speak to the ratios in terms of how much labor budget versus how much revenue and how that was conducted in the past. You know, I only know what, you know, what I think is going to be best for the program moving forward. And, you know, and that takes, that's a conversation with the finance department, that's a conversation with the superintendent and with the school committee. So, you know, I'm hoping moving forward, if, for instance, the summer labor budget was exorbitantly high, you know, that we can look at taking steps to mitigate that a little bit so that there's a little bit more of a balance.
Yeah, Karen, did you have something else that you wanted to share?
Yeah, I have been working with Kristen with the financials a little bit and.
Soon she talks. You have to go back to the phone.
I know. This was an important one, too. She's about to crack the case.
Yeah. She'll be back. As we wait for her, Dr. Thompson, was there anything that you wanted to address so far from the questions that you've heard?
Yeah, and I know that $2 seems like, seems like a lot. I mean, it's been over 12 years and if you divide out $2 by approximately 12 years, it's about 16 cents a year. And this is kind of why we really need to get into a habit of looking at our fees on a regular rolling basis. So we're kind of not in, you know, the position we're in because we're, you know, I mean, we, it is, you know, it is a self-funding program. So it needs to draw enough tuition in order to be self-funding. You know, I think it'd be a crime not to have the program. And we need to make a correction or that's kind of where we're heading.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah.
We can. Welcome back.
I don't know what happened. Just when I speak. But anyways, I was going to say I do support increasing the rate. You know, she wants to improve the program, expand the program. And with the rates right now, it's difficult to be able to sustain the program at the rates that she has right now. So I think that the program really does need to increase those rates, especially given the fact that you want to improve and expand it.
Thank you, guys. Other questions, feedback from the committee at this time? Dr. Wyeth, was there something that you wanted to share?
Got to unmute there. There we go.
No, just an observation that I suspect that the demand for, you know, extended-day programs is going to increase dramatically, given the circumstances. I could be wrong, but I think you're looking at a real increase in need for this program.
Yeah. Chris, if you can't speak to this tonight, that's okay. I don't mean to catch you off guard. But I know that that survey that you did send out to parents a couple of months ago, one of the questions was around, excuse me, how parents felt about the value of the program, correct? Do you remember some of the feedback that you obtained from that?
Yes. I mean, you know, and actually that, maybe not in this particular context or in this forum, but I do think that information would be good to share as well, perhaps with the committee so that they can review the rate increase in the context of feedback that we've received about the program. And certainly the support of the program, I think, has been resounding. You know, we do receive a lot of positive feedback from parents on a regular basis, which is wonderful. Most, I would say maybe around 75 to 80% of the parents who responded to that question said they do feel that they're getting a great value for the amount that they're paying for the program. And so I think that that's, you know, in line with the fact that the program is affordable, offers expanded hours, you know, offers the safety of working with teachers that are within the district that they know from the classroom or that they know in some capacity in their schools. And then again, as we continue to roll out, that they will, you know, that we will be eliminating the transportation fee that parents will need, you know, will be able to enjoy after-school programming within the school that they drop their kids off in the morning. And that's, you know, that's critical and that's the equity issue, too. So, you know, all of this is sort of toward that vein.
Yeah, thank you. The one other thing I'll add just to the committee has all the context of this discussion. Chris was a part, is a part of our School Start Time Task Force that has obviously been put on hold right now due to everything going on. But she has been a participant of that task force and extended day has been a hot topic, you know, with that group. You know, really looking at if school start times do change, not in September, it's the year after, but if they do change, how does that impact the need for care before and after school? So there has been a lot of discussion with that task force. And, you know, two of the elementary principals are part of that task force, Nancy at the Blue Mountain and Brian Riley at the Prescott, which are also, as you see tonight, the two satellite sites for going forward. And the consensus of that task force is very much in alignment with what we are hearing in the presentation this evening. So I just wanted the committee to have that background as well. But at this point, you know, I don't think we are necessarily expecting a vote tonight unless the committee was comfortable with it. I think if there's a request for additional information, you know, Mya and Joan, I know you're both asking some really good questions. So is there further analysis that you would like to have done? And we can hopefully bring Kristen back for our next meeting. Yeah, Joan?
I would really like to see year-over-year analysis, how long it would take to get to the funding level, increasing at more modest amounts. I recognize, Dr. Thompson, what you said, that it's 16 cents a year. But that's not what we're proposing to do. We're proposing to do 50, you know, 50% in a year. And I'll just, here's why. I have an anecdote. When I took the train into Boston, one year, the MBTA raised the rates for parking from $2 to $4, which should, like, in, right, which should seem like your age should be able to handle that. But it did make an impact on our budget and it was, and we were stuck. There was nothing else that we could do. You know, because driving into Boston is ridiculous. And so I really do would like to see a more modest, I would like to see a proposal that includes a more modest rate increase over the years so that people have the ability to adjust, especially in light of the fact that we are coming out of a massive, well, I'm hoping we'll be coming out of a massive unprecedented recession in the country. So that's the analysis I'd like to see, plus my commentary.
Other feedback from other committee members at this time?
I have a question, Teresa.
Yeah, Karen.
Yeah.
With the analysis, Joan, would be considered like increasing it this year a percentage? And then the following year, increasing it the rest of the rate that she wants to get to?
Yeah.
Would that be something that would be possible?
Chris, question brought up two things. One, I think, is to get to that $6, that $6 an hour kind of minimum that you need to keep it afloat. And how would we do that? But then the other piece of that is what are the markers for which we should be considering rate increases anyway? And I see those as two separate budgets, not budgets, two separate almost policies or proposals, two separate proposals. So the proposal I'm specifically asking for is how do we get to that $6 an hour in a way that is a more modest year-over-year increase? And then after that, what should be the markers through which we consider raising rates? Is it 16 cents a year every year so that we know that, so that we never, you know, 16 cents an hour every year or 25 cents an hour every year? So that we don't ever end up in a situation where we're asking people to make big chunks of change? Because the folks who are using extended day are also using it for the vacations and they're also using it for the summer. And so what looks like just a $2 an hour for a couple hours a day is actually a much bigger increase on people's salaries. So.
Yep.
Yeah, I think Mya had a comment.
Yeah, I definitely think this program needs to be self-funding. You know, that is certainly our goal and absolutely in terms of their regular operating expenses. I guess what I'd like to see is a little bit more information about what the budget looks like for extended day. Not, not like line by line, but roughly, you know, how much are we paying in salaries? And, you know, like, how much are we paying for overhead? And, you know, you mentioned some like capital expenses that maybe that makes sense for us to consider different ways to fund that. You know, like food services, they, the lunch fees that we collect pay for the operating expenses. But when they needed new kitchen equipment, that wasn't funded out of lunch fees. And so maybe we need to, you know, I am definitely, I think $6 per hour is entirely reasonable. I've got no problem with that. I am nervous about a 50% increase in one year. But I'm definitely open to the idea of when we do approve this, that we approve for the next three years. Like, you know, I don't want to set it up so that you have to come back to the school committee and justify every increase every year. That doesn't make any sense either. But I think that it would be fair to say, okay, this year it's going to be, and I'm just throwing numbers out there, you know.
Yeah.
Next year it's going to be $5 an hour and then the following year it'll be $5.50 an hour and then the following year it'll be $6 an hour. And just like let everybody know and plan accordingly. Especially if we were not for the global pandemic, I would be much more comfortable with like, all right, let's just go for it. Let's bite the bullet. We should have done this. We should have started this conversation six years ago. But given the financial realities, but I love the ideas for growing the program. And I do think that that's, you know, I think it is going to increase the value for families. But I just don't want to, I want to see if we can be creative and maybe find ways that we can get the program some Chromebook, access to some Chromebooks without that coming out of an hourly rate.
Yeah, I thank you very much. I just wanted to say, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, Teresa, but I understand that it's, you know, the timing of this is, as you mentioned from the beginning, we had been examining this back in January, if not before. And so it just happened to become available, that we just found the time, you know, the spot to discuss this now. And even in discussing it now, in the critical crisis that we're in, we're still saying that this is just a draft and just a first, you know, this is the first round conversation of what we hope will amount to some sort of review as to what's going to work best for the program long term. So, so thank you, everyone, for your time.
Yeah, I was just going to say thank you so much for joining us. Was there anything else anybody wanted to ask or share with Chris? She is going to join us again later in executive session as we talk about some employment and payment during the rest of COVID-19 with extended day. But anything at this point anybody wanted to ask so she doesn't have to hang out with us too much longer? No? All right. Well, thank you so much for joining us and we'll be in touch. Thank you. Okay, so Dr. Thompson, time for your superintendent's report.
Yes, a couple of things really quick. Friday evening at 10:30, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education came out with revised guidelines for remote learning. We were excited to see those. The big changes in that was the department gave us what they are calling power standards or essential standards. And these are going to be the main focus of our work over the next week and through the end of the year. But what they have done basically is, is instead of us trying to teach all the standards, we're going to be able to, they've identified those standards that are essential, that students at each grade level should have or should have mastered in order to move on to the, to the next grade. That's important and that we can now focus our remote learning on those essential standards. Some of the things that are not in there will be, you know, extra things to do and not stress as much, which should be, enable us to focus our instruction and our lessons going forward. The other thing is that, you know, we saw a lot of, 90% of, 95% of what was there, and I'll let Dr. Wyeth jump in here in a second. We are in alignment with the recommendations with the, from the commissioner and even these new revised. There's a couple of things to work on, the essential standards that I mentioned before. The commissioner has prioritized asynchronous recorded lessons as a way to do that. And teachers sharing and working together to create these assignments. The other thing that is coming from that is that each level is going to be developing rubrics to report out to parents based on those essential learnings. And the engagement that we are seeing from students and we are asking families that they engage with that. The next thing I want to, actually, I'll see if, Alex, do you want to add anything to what I just said or?
No, I think that's fine. You know, I wanted to show the committee a little bit of what we're doing on the professional development and the things. But in terms of the academic side, I think that what you said is fine, yeah.
Okay.
Dr. Thompson, I think Mara had a question for you on what you had to share.
Yeah, thank you very much. Two questions, actually. In, I know some of this was in the D E S C guidelines that came out and I think it would be helpful. I have a question, something else I'd just like you to clarify for the community who may not have read through all the D E S C guidelines that came out in terms of what those benchmarks are for passing, not in terms of what they are per grade, but how are we going to assess whether or not students have met them? So what the tool that's going to be used for that? And then if students do not, what is going to be the mechanism for them to be able to catch up? Like, is it, will it be over the summer? Will it be that they will complete some of that work in the fall? Just what some of the thoughts are on those two topics?
Yeah, and one of them, we have a good handle on them and the other one, you know, we don't yet. But basically what has happened, I believe the high school has already sent out their, sent out their grading rubric. The middle school has one as well and the elementary schools, they're either going out the end of this week and the beginning of next week. But there are rubrics and it's highly weighted to engagement. And again, it's basically a pass/fail situation. We are not planning and not intending to keep students back. It is not anyone's fault that we had to close our schools. The second part of the question is the most difficult one, but you know, I appreciate, I tried to answer this yesterday on the Facebook Live event as well. You know, we are supposed to get money from the CARES Act that is supposed to go to districts to give us funding to close gaps. It's going to be supposedly distributed much like the ARA money back in 2008. Unfortunately, we are still waiting for clear directions from the United States Department of Education on that to the states. There was, there was an article in the paper either this morning or yesterday that just caused, you know, again, same rhetoric about vouchers and other things along there as opposed to really helping public schools. But we won't go there tonight. But that guidance, that money is supposed to help us offer programming to close these gaps. So we have already started discussions about possible summer programming, what it So we have already started discussions about possible um, summer programming, what it would look like, what it would possibly look like. Um, you know, in, you know, in the context of social distancing, uh, as you know, we normally have um, you know, all of our summer programming happening at the middle, at the middle school. That very well might not be possible. Um, we very well might to ha- might need to have several um, things going on at several different sites to spread people out and make sure we're keeping socially distant. Uh, the advantage of that is the kids maybe will be able to walk to a local elementary school to get that programming. Um, but again, it depends on what the restrictions are, where it is. Uh, currently we are looking at um, the buildings have been closed, the buildings have been cleaned. The maintenance staff has been doing kind of the behind the scenes maintenance type work like, you know, uh, replacing water fixtures, uh, putting in bottle fillers at the, uh, at the high school because there, there's much less transition there by using the refillable bottles there. Plus it's better for the environment, uh, changing air filters. So those kind of things we normally do in the summer, we've been doing all spring. Uh, the next piece, now that we know what, you know, now that we know that unfortunately we're not coming back, you know, we're going to be looking at, you know, getting um, children's things back to them. Uh, getting teachers' rooms and theirs, their things out like they were closing for the summer. Um, so that we could start our summer cleaner, cleaning with the idea that that's probably going to be the summer cleaning, it's going to be the late spring cleaning because we might need to use those buildings in the summer. So if not the summer, it might be the fall, it might be uh, after school programming. But um, you know, the important thing is that we need to be focused on these essential standards and making sure the kids have gained, you know, a firm piece of, you know, of what those learnings are. Um, I, by the department coming out and saying, these are the essential things, then one would tend to think that that's what the NCAS would be focused on um, going forward. Um, but you know, if we're not, we don't, but we don't know when summer will start. Summer might not start till August. You know, uh, you know, part of, you know, coming back in September, part of September and October might be just coming back and, and dealing with the previous year's essential standards and, and trauma, and dealing with trauma. I mean, that's, that's a reality of, of where we could be. Um, so as, as can our crisis management uh, approach is, is looking at all the options, keeping our eyes open, looking at what other countries are trying to do right now, what it looks like and trying to prepare or at least start discuss, discussing a thousand different options, but not planning on any one of them, just setting some groundwork. So that's kind of what the first step um, would be, you know, we're waiting for the state to give guidance for what summer camps and programs will look like, because that will all same for schools. They're supposed to give us uh, information on uh, what reopening schools might look like in a, in a somewhat, I mean, again, I, I used the analogy last night, we're not going to be ripping the bandaid off. We're not going to go from groups of 10 to groups of, you know, a thousand kids walking into the high school. So what does that look like? So once we get that guidance, once we find out how we can spend the CARES money, how much CARES money we're going to get, then we can get into phase two and phase three. But some of that initial talking about summer programming or late summer programming has begun. It, it, you know, conceptually, this is what it could look like. What are our questions? What are our options? But, you know, fun times. Fun times. So um, I, I think I, Joan, did I hit your question?
Yeah, you did, you, you did. But as you were talking, I came up with another question, so sorry.
Right.
I don't know if there is an answer to this one yet, but um, do you have a sense of what percentage of that essential power standards was already complete before schools uh, disbanded for the year? We didn't disband. What's the right word there? What's the right verb? Closed, closed, before we closed.
Yeah, closed.
For the year.
Move into full remote action. Uh, I do not, um, you know, ba- basically we've just started taking those apart. Again, they came uh, Friday, 9:10:30, I instantaneously sent them out to, to the team. We talked about them Monday. Um, so I'm, I'm sure we have progressed on many of them. Um, you know, they're not new standards, they're standards we have been working on. The, uh, the basic difference is instead of, instead of working on all 10, now we can, we can concentrate on the six and a half or the seven, or the six or the five that are there. Um, so the other things, you know, we're not going to erase those, but we're going to put more energy into those going forward. So when you have a standard, it, it, you know, it goes through, you start and you keep working on it throughout the year. So what happens now is these last few months is that you're focusing on tho- those five or six power standards going forward. But I can't, I can't tell you exactly how far we are in each of those, you know, that would, I don't know, Alec, if you have a sense, I might as well put you on the spot too.
No, I mean, it, it's, um, it's an interesting question. I think that, that, the, the answer is that because they are power standards, we've been working on them since the beginning of the year. But to put a percentage on it would be a tough thing to do. So um, you know, uh, we certainly can do a little dipsticking with staff and saying, how are you relative to these power standards? Are there, you know, what, what percent of them have you, you know, sort of covered prior to the pandemic? And how do you plan on covering the rest, you know, from now until the end of the year? You know, I think that's, that's what they're digesting right now um, with the, with the um, the documents that have been provided to them. Um, but I suspect we're in pretty good condition, pretty good shape with those power standards because they're the fundamentals of each framework, you know?
I just, I suspect there are many a homeschooling parent who would uh, love to know how much new learning um, is going to be assessed from March 14th, March 13th until June.
Yeah.
I, we may have a difference, the homeschooling parents might have a very different perspective on the importance of that. I love the engagement focus though. That's all I'm going to say. I love the engagement focus.
Right, yeah. You know, and, and it is, and I said this yesterday, it, it is about giving your best effort. You know, and we're, when we come back together, we're gonna have to come back, we're gonna have to assess where kids are quickly. Luckily, we have tools to do that with now. We didn't, a year ago, we didn't. Okay, but now we have tools to do that with. Um, and, and really start doing some intervention that early part of the year and that intervention is going to have to continue on. Uh, and we're gonna have to partner with, with families and, and students to get that done. Um, but we're committed to get them where, where they need to be. Um, so, so the other thing, uh, I wanted, a couple of other things I wanted to um, bring up, uh, the old hand principal search. Uh, tomorrow is uh, tomorrow afternoon, starting at 3:00, we have staff forums. The um, the family or the public forums start at 6 o'clock. They will be uh, broadcast on NCM. Uh, we have two um, two finalists. Um, one is um, Michael uh, Banks. He is a assistant principal at Sullivan Middle School in Lowell. And the other, Alec, you have to help me out with the last name for some reason, I have it blocked here, is uh, Steve.
Olson.
Olson, uh, and he is the chief academic officer in, and principal in Worcester, uh, the Worcester Hills Charter School. Um, so those are our two finalists. We're, we're looking forward to uh, to uh, introducing them to uh, to the community tomorrow. Um, Alec, you wanted to talk a little bit about professional, oh, I, I, I want to say just one thing before I turn it over to Alec and I, one thing after he finishes, but um, you know, I, I, I think everyone needs to realize, and, and a colleague of mine put it uh, pretty, pretty succinctly, it is every single one of our teachers have just become a first year teacher again. Um, so normally you have a first year teacher and you have several veteran teachers who will help the first year teacher out, you know, to get through because they have to create everything from scratch. They walk in with barely anything except, you know, their educational background, their student teaching uh, and, and their own experience. They're young, full of energy, probably don't know any better, but you know, they, they come in, you know, and they do that. So they're all, every teacher in our system essentially is a first year teacher. They're starting from scratch. You go to the elementary schools, not only are they starting from scratch with a new way of teaching, but they're also having to learn a lot of new tools at once. If you're a first year teacher, you're walking in to a situation you're familiar with. These teachers are walking in into a virtual environment. They never possibly or imagined teaching elementary school full-time in, or middle school full-time in. And you, you know, and we, we were working on a blended approach, not a full virtual approach. So, you know, I just want to kind of put that kind of perspective out there for everybody. And, and I have to say, th- th- they're working, they're working hard, they're doing a great job. They are really, you know, really are heroes out there. Um, I can't say enough about their work and how hard that they're working and how much they're doing. Um, and you know, I know everybody's a little frustrated being, being um, holed up and, and, and not being able to do what they normally want to be able to do. Um, and you know, we'll just, I'll throw it over to Alec for PD.
Yeah. All right. Thanks, Dave. Um, so I think it was Mara that asked sort of how are we providing ongoing PD for staff? Um, and so I'd like to show you what um, we've put together. And when I say we, it's, you know, really the, the, the fundamental uh, workhorses behind this were Joe Kidd, um, uh, Jill Milton and Stephanie West and myself were kind of helped structure this. And then um, once we've sort of provided the structure for it, the, the teachers have jumped on the bandwagon wholeheartedly as um, Dave's, Dave mentioned, I, I can't say enough about our staff. They're, they're tremendously dedicated people. We've got teachers who are, as Dave said, like being ex, you know, exposed to a whole new uh, job skill set and yet they're still willing to help uh, their colleagues over some of these hurdles. And some of the hurdles are pretty big for some folks who, you know, haven't uh, been exposed to some of these technologies as much as some of the others have. So, but anyway, I just want to show you sort of the um, kind of how it's taken off. And it continues to grow. And um, so I'll present now just to give you a little picture of what that looks like. You all can access it through the um, our PD page, which I'll show you right now. So let me click the button and choose a window. And I will present. And share. So I'm gonna get, whoops, why is that showing up? Hold on.
There you go.
But no, that's, that wasn't the document. Let me uh, let me um, present. I don't know why that window popped up. Let me do my entire screen then here. And share that. Okay. All right. So um, I'll show you this. Hopefully you'll see this now um, as it opens up. Do you see um, the page here clearly enough?
Yeah.
Okay. So this is our remote uh, learning opportunities page, which is really sort of the, the workhorse right now for our, our remote PD. And there um, two important features here I want to show you. One is this remote learning opportunities, which is a, a link that will take you to a bunch of webinars and other professional development opportunities available to staff. Um, I think I may have shown that to you last time very quickly. It's a page that I basically put together and others sort of contribute to. Um, and we're collecting requests from staff for remote um, support. So if you click on this, you'll see a um, basically a spreadsheet that'll open up. And I will show you what that looks like because we've already gotten some requests since we put this out in the beginning of this week. Um, and I'll give you a little, just a little peek and sample of what that looks like. My internet, I am going to get some new equipment here, Dave, so that my internet hopefully is a little quicker. But anyway, this is what this looks like. Um, so they identify where, what their needs are, who's requesting it, you know, what school they're working in, the best times and days for, for us to provide that kind of support. And then we assign a facilitator to it. So I'm gonna do two things here. One is um, um, one's on, on um, uh, point, looks like somebody accidentally deleted that. Um, but that's going to be on Teach Point and then Drive Organization. Um, but going back to our, our website, really, I wanted to show you this in particular. So then down below, um, basically we've got a cadre of teachers and some administrators who have um, basically said, okay, I'll run these workshops, if you will. These sort of um, help sessions or sometimes there are little mini training sessions um, on the following topics. And they've scheduled them through their, through our um, our um, uh, what we call a remote learning PD calendar. All right? And so everybody has access to that calendar. What these, what these folks do is they develop a uh, event in that calendar and then it automatically gets posted to this page here. So this is an evolving page. And you can see, you know, all the things that people are doing for their colleagues right here. Um, and that, as I say, will continue to build out. Some things will fall off as people get comfortable with certain pieces of the new technologies and other things will be added on based on the staff request um, sheet and information that we gather. So I think it's a pretty solidly structured kind of program here. And as I say, it's um, it's an evolving document. Um, so I will stop sharing right now so we can get back. Uh, but that's sort of the core of our, of our work right there. Um, and there we go. Um, so are there any questions about that? Um, I'm, I'm, I say I'm really proud of folks for all the people that are stepping up and, and doing this. We've got, we've got some really skilled folks, which is great. And people continue to learn, you know?
Yeah. So you know, often, oftentimes that out of great crisis comes great growth. And we are, you know, we are seeing that, we are seeing people work, collaborate, work together, share skills in a way that, you know, because of the situation that maybe you'd put it off or something along that line, but they really are stepping up. So um, so then the only other thing I want to share is that I did a um, Facebook Live event uh, yesterday. I do apologize if people missed it, but uh, I did not realize that when I was in the Norwood Public Schools website, there's actually like three different websites there. So I was, I was basically, you'll, you'll enjoy this, I was basically talking to myself for the first half hour and then found my, my way to the right page, did it again. But I had a great practice the first time. So uh, so that, that's out there. It is posted if people want to re-watch it. Uh, NCM is going to replay that, much to my horror, but that's okay. And then because I love um, you know, being uh, being front and center, uh, I'm also going to do one next Tuesday at 4 o'clock as well. And that event has already been scheduled through website. Uh, later on this week, probably tomorrow, I'll send out uh, another quick connect ad with the Google form if you want to give me questions and topics so that I can uh, start with those. Um, but I will send that out again as well. But you know, it's a good opportunity to, to uh, reach a few more people. People have tons, tons of questions. And again, it's, it's, you know, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out what the future possibilities could be and a lot of time waiting for direction from state and federal sources and uh, but I think it's important that um, you know, we do that at this point in time. So, and that's uh, that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson, Dr. Wyeth. And uh, Dr. Thompson, I thought your live was great yesterday. So thank you for doing that. And um, you know, you just modeled resiliency and learning new technology and this is happening to all of us right now. So.
I'll even tell, tell you one more secret here was, but I, I, I went and I posted the, the uh, you know, for next Tuesday. And again, th- there's like a central page that has three other pages that are public pages. And I, I could not get it on the right, the right page. So I had to do it three times, but it's in the right place now. And, and, and Joe Kidd gave me a, 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 a passing mark finally for my product. We won't talk about the process, but he had to do a couple of new video for me, but that's okay because it's not. Even normally you have your Facebook page as your, but this is a little bit of a different monster. It's okay.
Oh, thank you. So moving along on the agenda into budget. Uh, so Ms. Sheridan has a grants report prepared uh, for the committee tonight. And you should have a couple of documents in your Google Drive, which you will be referencing. Um, so are we, are we showing the spreadsheet, Karen or Dave? Are you putting it up?
Um, I don't have it.
Is it in the drive? Let me, hang on.
It's in the drive, yeah. And it's linked on the agenda too.
All right, hang on a minute. All right.
I keep knocking me off.
Yeah, hang on a minute. I'm gonna uh, I'm gonna download it. Come on. There we go. All right. Uh, I will share. Let me just get rid of this. Too many tabs open. All right. So Teresa, I will share and, or no, Karen, I will share and you can, uh, speak to it.
Okay. Can you all hear me or else I'll go to the phone?
I can hear you right now.
I have my phone waiting. Okay. Um, okay. So, um, as you see, there's a spreadsheet here, um, with the estimates of the grant expenditures and balances to date. Um, what I did was I, I put in all the encumbrances for the payroll, um, so that we could see, um, what the estimate of the ending balance would be, um, with all the expenditures and payroll that we have for the year here. Um, with, you have, um, many, uh, grants, both federal and state, that supplemental resources for the district. Um, with regard to the special education, um, grants, you have three. You have the IDEA. You have the early childhood grant, and you have the inclusive preschool grant. Um, the IDEA grant, uh, is, uh, the larger of the special education grants. It's, um, provides eligible students with, with special education services where activities deemed essential for the student's success. Um, so that grant, um, we mostly use that for, um, payroll, um, in the district. And that grant should be fully expended by the end of the year, um, for both the FY nineteen F and FY twenty for that grant. Um, the second special education grant that you have is the early childhood grant. The early childhood grant, um, is intended for youth to serve the eligible children of three to five-year-olds. Um, that grant also should be fully expended by the end of the year, um, with the payroll. Again, that grid has, um, some, uh, staff in there, a little bit of, um, some supplies in there. A little bit of stipends in there, but it's mostly salaries. Um, the final special education grant is the inclusive preschool grant. The inclusive preschool grant is only for this preschool. Um, and that grant, um, is going away this year, after this year. This is the last year for that grant. And again, that one's going to be fully expended by the end of the year. Um, that is used for, um, we have about one point, 1.3, 1.35 special education pairs, um, which due to the fact that this is the last year for that grant, we've had to absorb, uh, those paraprofessionals into the general fund for the FY twenty, um, fiscal year. Um, with the, um, we have many title grants, which are federal entitlement grants. We have Title One, Two, Three, and Four. Um, out of the title grants, um, the FY nineteen title grant will be fully expended in full with the encumbrances this year. But there is, there is going to be some money available in the Title One, in the Title Two As, and in the Title Three and the Title Four. Um, and those grants, um, we're lucky enough that they have extended the dates for those grants. So due to the COVID-19, they've extend, extended the date for the grant. So we have through, um, June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one, um, to spend those grants down. So you'll see, we do have some balance remaining in those grants, but we have plenty of time to spend them down. And I did have a meeting with Alec and with the new, um, grants manager, Patty Bortek. And I, again, this morning I had another meeting with Patty Bortek, and they are in the process of looking at, um, the money that are available and what categories, and deciding on a plan of action and how they want to expand the rest of the money in those grants. Um, the grants do have the ability to amend them. If there's categories that you would like to change because your needs have changed, you do have that ability to amend the grants.
Did we lose her again?
Yeah, I think so. So if I can just jump in real quickly while she's getting back in. So my, my plan for these grants, the ones that, that I have oversight on, which are not the special ed ones, but is to meet with the administrative team, Dave, once we've got all this updated information squared away. Make some decisions about how we want to allocate those funds. Um, so that's sort of, that's got to be a collective team decision, which is going to be on our next agenda.
Okay, I've come on by phone so that I don't keep cutting off. Can you all hear me now? Okay. Um, so like, um, Alec said, we did have the meeting to, uh, get a plan of action on how to spend the remainder of those grants. Um, and, uh, the, the IDEA, the special education grant, um, that the extension for that grant, that did not get extended to six thirty two thousand and twenty-one. That is only extended till September thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. However, um, it appears that with the encumbrances for payroll, that those two grants will be fully expended. So, um, we won't have a problem with that. The, um, let's see, what else I was going to explain to you? Um, I did give you a chart of the, the title grants and the IDEA grant, um, the early childhood grant, and then the inclusive preschool grant, um, the awards that you have been given each year uh, for FY eighteen, FY nineteen, and FY twenty. Um, so the amounts that you've been getting every year are, are similar. You did get a little bit more money in FY twenty than you had in FY nineteen, um, for the Title One Grant and for the Title Two A, um, the Title Three, um, the Title Four was down a little bit, uh, and the IDEA was up a little. Um, and like I said, the inclusive preschool grant, that one is $30,000. And this is the last year for that grant. Um, the, one of the other grants that you have is, um, the nurse applied for a comprehensive school health services grant. Uh, that grant, um, if I, right now it has $15,945 left in that grant. And that grant is used for, um, it has a point six nurse in it. It has a point four adjustment counselor in it, and it has a point five of a sped paraprofessional. So that is a new grant this year. So that has helped, um, with, uh, the resources for your school this year. Uh, some of the other things that I give you information on the grant, um, I gave you an idea of the intended use for each of the grants. Um, that you have the Title One Grant with this, which is used to strengthen your core program in your schools and provide academic and support services to low achieving students to elevate your quality of instruction by providing eligible staff with substantial opportunities for PD to involve your parents and your guardians, active partners in their special and their chosen education, um, through open, meaningful, and communicate, communication and training. Um, you have the Title Two A Grant. This is a grant that is used more for, um, profession, PD for the teachers. This grant is to improve high-quality systems of support for excellence for teaching and leading. The Title Three Grant, this is the grant that you have that is for ELL. So it is supplemental resources in the district to help ensure that your ELL and immigration children and youth attain English proficiency and develop high skills of academic achievement. Um, your Title Four is for, uh, support a well-rounded education opportunities for support safe and health students and effective use of technology. So you see, each of the grants that you have, um, has a specific intended use. Your, uh, the IDEA, the sped entitlement grant, as I told you, is just for the special education services, as is the early childhood grant and the preschool grant. Um, one of the other grants that you had, um, the Safe and Supportive Schools Grant, and that creates safe, positive, healthy, culturally responsible, and inclusive whole-school learning environment and make effective use of systems for integrating services and aligning initiatives to promote students' behavioral health. Um, so, eh, as you see, each one of the grants has, um, different uses and, um, is a good way to support the revenue for the school to help you get more of your payroll and your expenditures. Um, so does anybody have any questions on any of the particular grants or, um, what the expenditures are for the grants?
I don't see, I don't see any questions at, at this time. Oh, Maya has asked. Go ahead, Maya.
I don't really have any questions, but Karen, I just wanted to thank you for providing us with all of this information. It's really great to, um, see it all in one place and, and to know that you've gone through the exercise of, um, you know, analyzing all the grants to make sure that we are using them as much as possible so that we, you know, get full advantage of them. So thank you.
Uh, thanks. You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from the committee around the grant report? No? Okay. Well, thank you, Karen.
Okay.
So at this time on our agenda, we did have a budget subcommittee update, um, on there. Um, you should have in your Google folder the minutes from three of our last meetings, um, on February twenty-sixth, February twenty-seventh. Yes, we did meet two days in a row. And then March fourth. Uh, we did have a meeting earlier this week. We haven't yet, um, you know, worked those minutes and approved them. But you do have the minutes from those three meetings in your packet. Um, Maya, or David, Karen, was there anything that you wanted to share with the committee at this time that we haven't already in our past budget updates?
No, I think we pretty much covered it. A lot of that was, you know, prior to the school committee meeting with FinCom and going to the capital outlet committee meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And, um, we did meet with FinCom sometime last week. I forget. It was a Thursday that we were all there.
All afternoon.
All afternoon for over three hours. So Dr. Thompson and Karen Sheridan and Maya and I were at that meeting. Um, I think it was, you know, a collective meeting, a lot of questions, a lot of discussion, um, around both our budget. Same presentation that the school committee saw last week from Dr. Thompson at our budget hearing. Um, we gave to FinCom, and then there was also some discussion around the capital outlay. Um, anything from that meeting, Dr. Thompson, that you wanted to share with the committee?
No, I don't think we're basically the same things we shared, uh, we shared at the last, our last meeting last week. So.
Yeah. Any budget questions at this time from anybody else on the committee for our subcommittee to look into? No? All right. So moving right along on our agenda into old business. Um, so last week after our meeting, we did have an executive session um, where we started to talk through, um, the extended day employee compensation as well as food service employees' compensation throughout the rest of this COVID-19 situation. Um, but we do have to finish that discussion and vote on a motion in public section. So I think we should start with the extended day employees' compensation. Um, would anybody like to make a motion, uh, in regards to that?
I'll make a motion to continue paying extended day workers at least until May, through, up till May fourth.
Thank you, Maya. Was there a second on that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you, David. Uh, any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh, Teresa, I had my hand up.
Oh, sorry, Maya. Go ahead.
That's okay. Um, I was just wondering if Maya would be opening, open to amending her motion as the governor pushed back the date, um, for the, for the possible reopen from, I think it was May fourth to May eighteenth. So if we wanted to just kind of keep in line with that, I was just wondering if that would be something you'd be open to?
Um, I was just doing this so that we could get to, you know, executive session and then discuss further. So, I, I, I'm, I guess it's up to the will of the committee. What does everybody think? I mean, we are not meeting again until May thirteenth, so that makes it tricky. Is it May thirteenth that we're meeting again?
It is, yeah. We, again, unless there's a need for us to meet next week, but fingers crossed that that doesn't happen. Uh, so there's a motion on table. There's a second. Do you, do you want to amend the motion, Maya, or do you want to proceed with the May fourth date?
I mean, the, really, I think that there's more to discuss and, and more to analyze. And, um, in some ways, the best thing to do would be to have our executive session and then take a vote in public. But I don't know that we can do that tonight.
Yeah. Um, I mean, we already have, you know, plans to go into executive session. So if we need to, we can, um, schedule another public meeting if we need to before May thirteenth. Um, so that is always an option. If Katania, did you have something to say? Are you just laughing at me with the additional meeting possibility? All right. So, um, the motion, uh, made by Maya and seconded by Dave Katania is to, um, pay extended day at least through May fourth at this time. So on that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Was that unanimous? Yes. Okay. So five zero. Um, and then the other discussion we had in executive session last week, um, that again, we need to take a vote on now in public was around the food services employees' compensation.
So I will make a motion to continue paying food services employees through the remainder of the school year.
Okay. Is there a second on that motion?
Happy to second.
All right. Thank you, Dave, for the discussion on that motion to pay food services through the rest of the school year. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. That is unanimous as well. Five zero. All right. Thank you. Um, so just a couple of what I think are quick items for new business, um, way back in January. We had an MASC training, uh, with Dorothy Presser. And I just didn't want to let that important work go by, um, that we had started to work on at that meeting. And two of the things we discussed at that meeting, um, one was having a, um, a template for presenters. And I thought this might be a good time to revisit that discussion because, uh, in May and June, on our long-term agenda, we do have the principals coming to present on both the handbook and the school improvement plans. So in your Google Drive, there is a very short handout, um, that Dorothy Presser sent me, um, that she thought was a really good guide on the types of questions that we might want to discuss. Um, so it's six questions. It's just, you know, the basis to get this conversation started. Uh, so from the committee, I'm just wondering, do you like that handout as is? Should we adopt that as our template? Or are there changes or additions that you would like to see?
My apologies, Teresa. Where is it in the shared drive? I'm not.
Uh, it is linked on the agenda. If you have the agenda open, Dave, it's, it's under new business, the presentation format. Um, are you able to get it from there? Okay.
No problem. Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Um, Joan, did you have, uh, something to share?
Yeah, I would like to add a recommended time limit, um, to it or recommended. So I would say in the order of around fifteen minutes for presentation. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. Sure. Okay. So add that as the timeline, fifteen minutes. Did you have any other feedback on, on the questions?
No, I thought all the rest of the questions were clear and good. I thought it was a good guide.
Okay. Other feedback from other members on that guide or those six questions? No. Okay. So is there a motion to approve that with adding in the recommended timeline for the presentation is fifteen minutes?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Maya. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
That unanimous? Yes. Great. All right. Perfect. Um, so also wanted to follow up on the conversation that we had with Dorothy around the school committee self-evaluation. Um, so there is a, um, Survey Monkey link, uh, that MASC put together. Um, I believe it's going to take about thirty minutes for each person to go through. It is a pretty in-depth, um, questionnaire. Um, but if we want to take it either now or we can determine tonight when we might want to put that on the agenda, um, I can send out the link to everybody. We take it on our own. Um, the results go back to MASC. And then they actually compile our results and then give us a written report. And then once we have the written report, then we could have a further discussion. Um, but what is everybody thinking in terms of timeline? Is this something that you want to work on over the next month? Or what are your thoughts on when we take this on? Because this is something we have talked about doing, uh, but never actually implemented.
I think it's a good idea to do, and I'd like to do it before the. I think it's a good idea to do, and I'd like to do it before the town election, if possible.
Okay.
Uh, well, you know, it's a good time to do this now while we, while we have some focus on this. And besides, if we don't have a meeting next week, we have plenty of time.
Those are the words of Dave Katania, not me. Put that in the minute. Yeah, Joan.
Maya, why prior to the town election? Can you give me?
Because I'd like to get Maura's feedback before she leaves the committee.
I was trying to figure, I was like, I'm not quite, okay. Uh, I.
Those are the words of Maya, Maura, not me.
Oh, 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 trust me, it was noted. It was noted.
I, um, I, how many meetings in a row have we had?
We've had seven Wednesday meetings in a row.
Seven Wednesday meetings in a row, plus teacher union negotiations, plus budget subcommittee meetings. And plus, plus town meeting, well, town meeting. Right, FinCom, BBC. I would like to, and in addition to that, there's still a lot of unknown around non-essential businesses opening up. I'd like to push this conversation, quite frankly, until we know whether or not May 18th is a real date for the relaxation of the social distancing, in which case my time significantly frees up a little bit because we can start seeing family and friends for children, other types of things like that. I'm, at my bandwidth at this particular moment in time, especially for talking about a two or a, I don't know what date it is, especially if we're talking about a month-long turnaround, is tight. So I'll just put that out there.
Okay. Other thoughts on the, on the timeline? We have two main meetings on the calendar. May 13th and then May 27th, and then we have two June meetings, June 3rd and June 17th. And that's all we have scheduled so far. One of the other things that I will soon be reaching to you out via email is scheduling summer meetings. Look for that relatively soon, because again, we are allowed to discuss the agenda and schedule over email. So we basically have four meetings left at this time. As of right now, the election is June 8th, correct? Monday, June 8th? The last May meeting and the June meetings will be relatively full, I anticipate, with the principals joining us for school improvement plans and handbooks, and who knows what else by the time we get there.
And the, the last May meeting is the 27th, is that right?
It is, yeah, Maura. And the other thing is I haven't reached back out to Dorothy to see how quickly they can turn it around. I wanted to first get the discussion going, you know, with all the last someone we thought we could finish it. I, I don't know if they turn it around in a couple of days, or if they need some time. I'm not sure. I don't have that answer yet.
When I, when I went to the MAS C conference and I went to the session on self-evaluation, I mean, the, the document I saw was, I don't know, 20 or 30 questions, but they were all multiple choice. And, and so I, I don't think it takes long for them to, to get results.
Yeah.
And, and I think, um, you know, we don't necessarily, although I would really like to get feedback from Maura, so I'd like to ask her, you know, if she's willing to participate in the survey. I don't know that we need to, like, get results back before town election or that we need to, you know, necessarily even put it really on our agenda. I think it's just something that could be sent out to all of us afterwards and say, like, look, this is where people think we're at in terms of being prepared for meetings, getting the right information out to people, you know, doing an adequate job of advocating, all the different things that are kind of on the self-assessment.
Yeah, and, and Maya, I know we haven't done one of these, you know, in the last three years. Was it done your first year on school committee?
No, definitely not, to my knowledge. I, I am not aware of it being done.
Yeah, yeah. So it's just a process that, you know, we haven't really gone through. And, and I think it is valuable, and, and I think what you just said there is, is a great point, even if we don't discuss it as a meeting item right away. And, and I'm also seeing this as more of like a follow-up and a training at some point, you know, with MAS C when we bring them back in. I just don't want to let this item go, because I know when we had talked about it in January, we all felt like it was an important thing to do. And, but I respect everybody's time completely, and I know the world is insane right now, and we're all struggling quite a lot. And I won't dash your hopes, Joan, for social distancing being over May 18th. So I'll, I'll let you think that still.
Something to hold on to with school being canceled by the end of the year.
I will say, off of the, the timeline, if we're, if we're looking to discuss it, it would be very difficult for me to get anything done between, between now and the May 13th date. Just my, my final grades are due, and I will be just kind of tied to that for the next two weeks. But after that, I, I, I would have a little bit more time to get something together.
Okay, so what if I, I send it out and we plan for end of May, if possible, but we just continue to check in? And, you know, again, there's so many things up in the air for all of us in many ways, and if it needs to be pushed back more, we will discuss that. But I'll send out the link and we'll say, last day of May, aim to get it done. Gives you a little over a month, but again, we can readdress that if needed. And then I'll reach out to Dorothy and find out exactly what the timeline is on their end. Okay? All right, perfect. So at this time, Dr. Thompson, we have one donation?
We do. I am remembering to unmute myself, but yes, we have one, one donation from Base State Textiles. Our March rebate is $483.75.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Still moved? Thank you, Maya. Talking to Maura. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, great. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, school committee agenda. Joan, I see you first. So do you have anything on your, your list tonight?
I have no agenda this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Maura?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Uh, Maya?
Nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Dave?
No comments either. Thank you.
You all know I'm not going to say I have nothing to share, but I'll make it quick. I just want to share with the community a couple more webinars that Intact Norwood is going to be offering, all based around mental health, which is a really important aspect to support right now. So as a reminder, tomorrow night at 7:00 is the Teens, Tweens, and Quarantines webinar. And then on Thursday, May 7th, is Food for Thought, How Food Impacts Your Mood. And Kelsey, who's actually our dietitian in the schools, is presenting that one. On May 11th, also at 7:00, we have a licensed social worker who also specializes in social education presenting on pandemic parenting for grades K through 5. And this is actually a colleague of mine professionally who I know does amazing work. So for elementary school parents, I would encourage you to check it out on May 11th. And then, because I'm clearly bored and don't have enough to do, I am presenting a webinar on May 14th for Intact Norwood on the connection of sleep and stress, and how we can all sleep better during the social distancing and stressful situation we're in. So that's April 30th for Teens, Tweens, and Quarantines, May 7th for Food for Thought, May 11th for Pandemic Parenting, grades K through 5, and then the Sleep Webinar on May 4th. All right, so at this time, we do have to go into executive session to continue talking about compensation for extended day employees throughout the COVID-19 closures and also contract negotiations. We are going into executive session. We will only return for the point of adjournment. So I do need a motion?
Still moved.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Maura. So now I need to poll everybody individually. Maura?
Yes.
Maya?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Joan?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, so I will see all of you there shortly. But to the public, thank you, and stay healthy and safe. Good night, everybody.
Good night.